Order, the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for February 29th, uh, February, September 19th, 2020. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card. There are little green cards out in the lobby and file it with the secretary, the commission secretary, Sheri. Cards are available in the lobby, right? Speakers should state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Now, this does not apply to applicants, neither the three-minute limit necessarily nor the necessity to give us your name and address, although Sheri really needs it for the minutes. So, if you're going to speak, it would be better if you would do that for us. Is your mic on? Oh.
Sorry. All right. Comments must be directed to the commission, not to the audience, and while the Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the chair. Hmm. Sheri, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Quillisi?
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Here.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Corbin?
Here.
Commissioner Lottis?
Here.
Terrific. If you'll all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The next agenda item is public communications. The time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. But if you do speak during public communications, we are listening, we just may not do anything. I don't think we have any cards from people for public communications. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on anything other than an agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on. We have a consent item, and that is the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, February 5th, 2020. Are there any commissioners who have found adds or changes or deletions necessary in the minutes? Oh, sorry about that. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
All right. I'll make a motion that we adopt the Planning Commission minutes from February 5th, 2020.
Second.
Very good. Any discussion? Sheri, could we have a roll call, please?
Powers?
Yes.
Corbin?
Upstain.
Nolan?
Yes.
Quillisi?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. The next item is disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. As you know from the agenda, we had, we have two sites that we're going to be considering tonight, 334 East Ojai Avenue and 309 South Signal Street. Mr. Powers?
I haven't left my house in a week. This is the first time. So, no ex parte contacts and no site visits.
No, no site visits, okay?
I've been really ill.
Oh, sorry to hear that.
Slide over.
The cough did not sound good.
No. Doing my best.
Bobby?
Porray. I visited both sites and had no ex parte contacts.
I also visited both sites and had no ex parte contacts.
And I visited both sites and had no ex parte contacts.
Ditto. Visited the sites, no ex parte contacts.
All right. Thank you both very, thank you all very much. And Ray, I hope you get better. All right. We'll move on to our first public hearing item. Sign permit S-19-018, a proposed comprehensive sign program for Ojai Market, a multi-tenant commercial building located at 334 East Ojai Avenue. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Quillisi. The proposal is a proposed comprehensive sign program at 334 East Ojai Avenue. It includes a building that occupy, or will be occupying, three tenant spaces, A, B, and C. The zoning is C1 and has a general plan designation of downtown commercial. Both of those are consistent. The signs themselves include nine in total. You're looking at three directional, or I guess what I would call double-sided blade signs, one for each of the tenant spaces, and then you would also have three-door eyebrow signs, which would be really kind of, not necessarily building-mounted signs, but signs showing where the entrance is for each of these tenant spaces. And then you have what are referred to as two building-mounted directory signs, and those are at either end of the building itself, and then one wall-mounted sign, which is specific only to Unit A because of the special, I guess, special conditions that exist for that unit having three, three doors essentially. It allows them the opportunity for an additional sign. That sign is actually located and fronting onto, building-mounted obviously as well, fronting onto Ojai Avenue. On the dais tonight, you also have an errata, which I believe Chair Quillisi will speak to, that identifies some redline revisions for the commission's discussion and consideration for tonight. In addition to that, I was made aware after the agenda report went out that there are minor revisions to the comprehensive sign program. When I say minor, it's not changing the square footages, it's not changing the number of signs, it's making and ensuring that the square footage that has been identified within the agenda report is consistent with what the comprehensive sign program identifies. In addition to that, there were unit, there is a unit number that was, well, actually it's a unit number, and it's actually a unit letter that was inconsistently identified. I'd like to go through those, but first I want to identify that staff is recommending approval with this comprehensive sign program as proposed. But there could also be the discussion regarding the errata as well. I'd like to go through the comprehensive sign program if I, if we could, just so that I could identify what those changes are. We all have our packets here. I would ask for you to turn to the comprehensive sign program itself, which is...
Attachment A.
Attachment, well, no, that's the resolution.
Oh, that's the resolution. Oh, the program, okay.
Yeah, so it would be G. So, as a part of attachment G, page one of attachment G, not, or it could also be referred to as two of 10.
Yes.
The allowable signage, it references in the second sentence, a Unit 1. It should be Unit A. Sorry, page, page one of the sign program, or...
Page two of 10.
It's referred to as two of 10 on the bottom right-hand corner.
Oh, Unit 1. Oh, I see. Unit 1 should read Unit A.
Correct.
First line, under allowable signage.
Okay, I see.
Yeah, under allowable signage, the heading allowable signage. The second consistency revision is on page 2, to the right here, page 3 of 10. Within the heading for wall sign, the very last sentence reads maximum sign area 10, and then it has the number 10, square feet. I've crossed that out. The actual sign area is 10.25.
Right. As shown in the table.
Correct. Below.
Okay.
And then if we turn to, so that's the second, well, we have four in total here. On page 3, very next page, or four of 10 for attachment G, this one's a little harder to find, it's kind of a needle in a haystack here. Under the, within the bracket details on the right-hand side, probably mid-page, there is a three quantity that's being identified that's in, it's supposed to be six.
Six inches?
No, it's, it's the, it's the number of screws that are being used as a part of the standard detail.
And that's the bracket detail you're referring to?
Correct.
So that should be six.
Six, not three.
Got you.
That's in the lower-left of that box, you mean? That three?
No, that's three inches. Don't you, that remains the same. It's the quantity on the right-hand side of that bracket.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
Oh, I see, yeah. Okay. So that stays three.
So it's, it's six quantity, not three quantity.
Okay.
All right? And then, the last revision is, or consistency component is on page 5, or six of 10 for attachment G. Within there, on the right-hand side, there is a title, which is description. If you go 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 lines down, lines, it says maximum sign area 10.3 square feet.
That's rounded off.
But we know that to be 10.25.
Yeah, okay. All, all pretty minor. Are these things you've discussed with the applicant already?
Yes. Just spoke with him before the meeting.
Okay.
So with that, as I had said before, staff does recommend approval, but obviously we have an errata for discussion as well.
Yeah, and since, since the website-posted agenda did not have the errata, I think we need to go through it, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Before we start that, are there any other, are there any questions for staff from the commissioners?
Okay, I have one. I, so...
Back to attachment G.
On the wall sign, it just says colors shall be harmonious with the building, so who, who decides that? You?
Yeah, so the, the building, we have the color palette for the building, and we also, and that's a part of this, this agenda packet. We're looking for consistencies with the two.
Okay.
The material board, if it's followed, will be harmonious.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
And you have a physical material board?
We do have a physical material board, but you left it, yeah. It would be good to have, to pass around.
Pass around, okay.
Yep. The applicant's gone through the trouble to put it together, it'd be nice to pass it around.
To acknowledge.
Exactly.
It's a shame to have put it together and not being able to...
And not see the, yeah, exactly.
And I do have one more question.
Great.
So, the, you know, I, I did read through the, all the sign, you know, stuff that's in the municipal code and all that, and it did talk about fonts and fonts being like not too many, being harmonious. So, is there anything, where is the font? Because I, I, my understanding is we're approving, we would be approving, are we approving the, the shape of the sign as well as the dimensions?
Right, so you...
The projecting sign as well?
With the, with the comprehensive sign program, you would be approving the, the design?
Overall shape.
Yeah, and the shape, right, and the area in which that sign would live in.
But not the specific lettering?
Correct.
My, my understanding was that that would be determined in part by the tenant based on what their logo might be or something like that.
The tenant in cooperation with the property owner.
Right, and it was clear, pretty clear in the packet.
Okay. But we don't have any further requirements for certain kinds of fonts or anything like that. That's, that's to be determined when they come in with the exact lettering and they bring it into you guys.
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
Just on that point, I've seen comprehensive sign programs that have that font restriction. While it looks harmonious, it becomes difficult for those tenants to try to fit that font style into the mold of their...
That could be.
Their tenant square footage, so it's, it gets a little tricky for them.
I think good taste will reign.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Printers are not always true.
And I should also mention the applicant is here and available.
Yes, yes.
If questions, you have the applicant.
And I, I would look to you for advice. Should we go through the errata on the resolution now, or I, I would think at the end, after we've heard from the applicant?
I would say at the end.
Yeah, okay. So, the applicant and representative is the Becker Group. Someone like to come up and speak?
Thank you, Jeff Becker, for the Shanks Investment Property. So we're, we're hopefully designed, oh, sorry, hopefully designed a sign program that'll work for all the incoming tenants that we will be seeing hopefully in a couple months. And the, the color palette would be in keeping with the hardly fought design look of the buildings, so we're not planning on changing any colors at this point. So, and we have some directional signs along with the sign on the front that faces Ojai Avenue, and that should give the tenants, incoming tenants, some options for the building. So we, we hope it'll be very tasteful, that's our goals. And we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for the applicant? I, I'm trying to remember where, where the plan form was, that, that's in one of the earlier attachments, I guess. I, I had a little trouble with the, with the ground-level drawing in seeing where the directional signs were.
On the plan itself?
On the plan itself, yes. Which, which attachment was that?
G.
It was in G, okay.
Oh, here it is. Page 9, is this what you were referring to?
Right.
And this right here shows the, the sign right there.
Okay, so the, the three, what we're calling blade signs, that identify each tenant, those are down low on the wall, is that?
No.
Idea, or is it?
No.
Is it up?
They're up high.
It's up high on, on the pergola post?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Over eight, over eight feet.
On the elevation.
If you look at...
Yeah, look at the, the top thing.
Page...
You can see the...
Oh, the little white slits there, okay.
They have like little sample names in their bake shop and...
Correct.
And they have a clearance of eight feet.
A minimum clearance of eight feet, yes.
So are they actually at eight or are they...
A little taller than that.
A little tall, yeah, I was gonna say a little taller than that.
Those were, those are tall pergolas there.
They are.
Actually, this is really nice on the elevation, I mean, it really details it out. It's pretty self-explanatory.
I like to look at the whole thing.
Yeah. They did a really nice job on it.
Other than that, I thought it was, I thought it was a very complete and, and well-done package, and I thank you for that.
I do too, yeah.
That gives us, gives us all the context, I think, that we need to deliberate and make a decision here.
Thank you.
Anything else for the applicant? All right.
I do have one more question for staff. I, I'm not sure whether it was for the applicant, but, so, there's the thing about the tenant being responsible for removing their sign when they go, which is fine, but I'm just wondering, so what happens if they, you know, leave in the middle of the night and leave their sign and everything? Is there, since we have this called out?
So you may not be completely...
That's, that's in the, that's in the plan, but it's, it's also in the errata.
But it was, but it's been removed.
Correct. I think that's, that's a discussion I'd...
It's one of the errata items, yeah.
Right.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak otherwise on this as part of the public hearing? I will open the public hearing and ask for anyone who wishes to speak. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll come back to the commission for deliberation, and I think as, as Mr. Seibert suggested, we should go through the changes that are recommended for the resolution itself, which is going to be the, the legal document that governs this.
Correct.
This is the, the new attachment A, that, that came separate from the binder. The first thing I see is on attachment A, page 2 of 5, Community Development Department Conditions, item 5. It's exactly the point you were bringing up.
Oh, I didn't see this, okay.
We just got this to...
My reason, my reasoning in, in suggesting this errata is that tenants come and go, and the property owner is likely to have a much longer-term relationship with the city in any case, and I think the property owner should be overall responsible if they choose, as they have in attachment G, to make the tenant responsible for the signage in whatever fashion, that, that that's a private negotiation and it's not one that the city should be getting in the middle of. We just hold the property owner responsible and then let them handle it.
That's good. Agreed.
So, if I could just add a little bit of...
Yes, sir.
Maybe some icing to the, to the cake, if I, if you will. The, I've seen conditions like this over the years, and it's always spoken to the tenant having that responsibility in the, in the event that there is some sort of turnover. And trying to track down the tenant in terms of having that sign removed has proven to be difficult, if not impossible, and then who do we end up, who does a planner end up talking to or code enforcement talking to? It's the property owner.
Parcel owner, yeah.
So why put the tenant on the hook when the reality is, is it's going to end up folding back to the property owner?
If, if the property owner chooses to put the tenant on the hook, that's, that's a choice, so.
Makes sense.
So I, and looking at this, this would be a typical condition. I think, I think you can see this as being revised and coming in, in future when we do have additional signs that won't be seen.
Revised standard condition.
Correct. Not with the tenant, but putting it on, the owners is on the property owner.
I think that, I think that would be a good idea, but I think we probably, well, we can go through all of these and then see if they're all acceptable to the commission, and if they're not, then we can go back one by one and see what's not acceptable to the commission.
Right.
Next is on page 3 of 5, item 10, condition number 10. The wording was, the design must be reviewed and approved by the city, which would require Planning Commission approval, and it doesn't always. There, there's another provision of the code that says the director has some discretion in this for minor changes.
Right.
And so I suggested the change in that wording there. On number 11, it's the same sort of thing again, that some additional signs may require Planning Commission approval, but not necessarily all of them for the same reason.
Right.
And then, the last part of condition 11 there, the tenant shall be responsible, I suggested just deleting that because we've now covered it in condition 5 as a revised standard condition.
And just to clarify, it, it's not in addition to condition 11, it, it was originally a condition, a draft as condition 12. For some reason, the numbering fell off, but it was a condition 12.
Ah, okay, right. Okay. And I think that, that was...
Excuse me.
That was it, about half a dozen things, maybe that, not that many. One, two, three, four things. So what's the commission's pleasure? Are those, are those four wording changes acceptable here?
Yeah, they are to me.
Okay.
I'd be happy to make a motion if there's no...
Can I, can I just ask one more question?
Yeah, sure.
I'm basically okay with the sign thing, but I do feel like the projecting signs are maybe pushing bigness a little bit, so, and the applicant may, or may need to be able to answer this. How, what is the height of that Ojai Valley sign that's a projecting sign out in front?
You mean out, out into and over the, what's referred to as the public right-of-way?
Mm-hmm.
I believe it's 24, either 23 or 24, 24 inches, projecting out.
Oh, no, no, what's the, I'm sorry, what's the height?
From where the sign starts?
From the base of the sign to the top of the sign.
I think it's 90...
It's kind of got that arch.
96 inches is what I think I saw. Let me, let me just look at this real quick.
Six. No, 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 can't, can't...
You're talking about the size of the sign.
The size of the, there's a sign that, it's the building next door, and it's projects, it's the Ojai Valley Realtors sign.
Oh, you're talking about a sign that's already existing.
An existing sign.
It's an existing sign, and it projects out, it, it's Ojai, it says Ojai Valley on a...
Board of Realtors or something like that.
Yeah, it's got a similar shape to this.
I'm not sure.
Do you, do you know, Jeff?
I know the sign.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how, how high that is.
I'm just wondering how these compare to that sign, just...
Well, these are, these are just samples, it's not going to have necessarily Mary's Bakery, right?
Oh, no, no, I know, but it's gonna, but it's gonna be...
But you're talking about the size.
It's going to be 33 inches tall by 23, allowed.
Yeah.
And, I mean, the only, my only thought is that, as that walkway, it's kind, it ends up being kind of a constrained space to have signs that are too big for that space, you know what I'm saying? And so I'm just, I'm being a little bit picky here, but I, I, I'm just wondering how these, this, these signs compare to that one out in front. Because I did look, you know, the other signs along through the arcade, they're, they're, I would say they're like, maybe 15 to 20 inches, I'm, it's just guesstimating, but I'm seeing these signs as potentially noticeably bigger than a lot of the other signs around in the area.
I, I'm sure they're bigger than the ones at, what is it, 111 Blanch?
What's 111?
That's the old printing plant that is now three offices, I think done by the same folks.
That's your project also, yeah.
But those were professional office signs, and these are retail signs, and I think that, that may necessitate being bigger.
And by the way, that other sign program worked out real well, so...
Yeah, that was a very nice project.
So I'm just, I'm just, I'm just thinking about the overall size and how it...
You're looking for consistency here, right?
Scale.
How it fits in the scale of that space. That, and would, so if, if the other commissioners have any thoughts about that?
Well, maybe the, another question would be, what's the clearance from the top of the finished grade, in other words, the walkway to the bottom of the sign? Are you concerned about just feeling kind of claustrophobic in that space because of the scale?
Well, it's over eight feet, it's over eight feet from the sidewalk.
Yeah, it, if you go to...
I'm just thinking, as you're looking down there and we see, like, you know, the signs, what are we, what's the overall feeling in terms of the scale of the signs?
If you look at attachment G, page 8, the picture in the lower-left is the south elevation, and I, I presume this is all to scale, so that the little sign that we see there that's Mary's Bake Shop or whatever the example was, that's, that's to scale as far as the rest of the building.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe the concern, you know, these are shaped differently because we can't really hang them horizontally, so it's, it's a little more of a vertical sign, which is a little bit like the Blanch signs, as they came out, and actually our Blanch signs, when the signs that got approved were actually larger.
Oh, is that right? Well, 24 by 36?
We had them made and they were...
Oh, thank you.
Monstrous, and we had them remade, so if you need a big sign, we have some.
In the storage room.
So, you know, they, they, we did look at them when we had the, them delivered initially, and they looked too, they didn't look right, they just looked too big. They just looked too big. And so we had those adjusted down to what is there now, just so you know. But yeah, I think the difference is, you know, these are down the walkway, and we're trying to get them some signage because their stores, especially the back two...
They need visibility.
B and C face...you know, they face the green wall. And so the concept was to get them something that was visible from the front walkway, but hopefully get a lot of traffic down the walkway, the new walkway.
Right, no, I think we will.
I have a question.
It's very nice.
Go ahead, Bobby.
Is it two-sided so that...
It's two-sided.
So you can read it from either direction?
It's basically mounted on the cap of the arbor.
Okay.
And it is elevated, so I think it'll feel pretty good. The shape is a little different, though. Like, all the arcade signs are hanging, you know? They're all hanging in that canopy, and they're wider.
Right. You know, the other thing I think that may help, too, is as I'm looking at the elevation, they're posted at the end of the arbor, the pergola, and it looks like they're directly over like a planter. I mean, they're not projecting out into the walkways, what I'm trying to say. So they don't feel like they're blocking that passageway to me.
Yeah, we have metal planters there, and then there's a wall in the fencing.
Right.
And they're really at the entry to those spaces because this is gated. I don't know if you remember or not during our prior...
Do you remember that?
Conversations. But this whole thing has an ornamental fencing and some plaster walls, too.
Yep.
We did take the trees out.
I wanted to ask a question about that. My wife and I walked through the property or passed the property yesterday. It looks like you have several groups of what I would call caged rocks.
Yes.
Piles of rocks that are within a rectangular cage of wire.
Yep.
Is that intended to be the final version of what's there?
Yeah, it's getting close.
I didn't know if you were going to, you know, put some adhesive in between the rocks so that they would stand without the cage on the outside, or...
No, those are the style.
And they were in the ridge of that proposal, I remember. So it's a Gabion.
It's a Gabion wall.
Name of what it is, yeah. And it was approved.
I just want to make sure that when you get done with those, that all the loose ends have been tied down because they weren't so far, yeah.
Yeah, they're still not finished.
Yeah, still under construction, right, okay.
So what you're saying is the projection...I mean, I didn't...when I stood there, I mean, when I looked down the walkway, I wasn't really evaluating how far out they were coming. But so they're actually not coming...the signs are not projecting out past that lower wall?
Yeah, they're basically in line with that wall.
They're in line, okay.
Yeah, you can see that on that elevation.
If you walk down the brickway there, you're not going to walk under any of those signs. Not that it would matter because they're at least eight feet off the ground, but...yeah.
And you'll redo them if they're too big, right?
Yeah, we'll probably put a sample this time around. We'll, instead of having them made, we'll probably put a sample plywood and hang it up there and see how it looks. Because we...you know, we want them to be visible, but we don't want them to look unusual.
I appreciate that, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments by commissioners? I think it would be appropriate, then, to have a motion on this resolution.
I'll go ahead and do that, then. So I'll make the motion that we approve sign permit S-19-018. It's a comprehensive sign program for Ojai Market, a multi-tenant commercial building located at 334 East Ojai Avenue, units A, B, C, and Directory Signs 1 and 2. And then that we include the changes that were made to Attachment G, correct? And that we include the errata or the changes that we made to Attachment A.
To the resolution itself, yeah.
To the resolution itself. I think I'm...
Okay.
I'll second that.
Very good. Any other discussion? Sherri, could we have a roll call, then?
Powers?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Qualisi?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Congratulations. Thank you for a very nice design.
Thank you.
All right, well, let's move on to our second public hearing item. And this is a design review permit, DRP 19-008, proposed roof deck alteration to a single-family residence located at 309 South Signal Street. Could we hear from staff, please?
Sure. This project is a roof deck alteration, taking an existing gable roof and removing that and creating a 250-square-foot deck. The existing development on the site observes all the required setbacks of the VMU Zone or Village Mixed Use Zone. It's also in the general plan designation of Village Mixed Use. The project proposes an alteration on the second story. That is why it's here, for a design review permit to a single-family residence. The VMU development standards outlined in the ordinance in Title 10, Chapter 2, Article 5 speak to some design principles that the commission needs to consider regarding context, continuity, scale, and architectural design, and how those items are consistent with the patterns of development and character and scale of the buildings in the surrounding neighborhood. The ordinance includes some language regarding stair-stepping elevations to avoid monotonous building elevations and creating some interest. It also does speak to uncovered second-story decks being allowed to occupy that setback area or that area of visual relief.
Yeah, yep.
Correct. And the applicant has provided some additional photographic documentation of rooftop decks that should have been as part of your Attachment B in your staff report. However, the pictures are provided on the dais. For some reason, they didn't get included. The immediate neighborhood includes a mixture of architectural styles. However, the predominant roof form along the street in the vicinity is a gable or hip roof, typical of homes designed in a traditional Spanish craftsmen or bungalow architectural style. There are a number of other well-integrated small second-story balconies and a few larger decks, as you can see in those photos. The predominant architecture form, as I just said, is a pitched roof. The change to flatten the roof form and create a roof deck does provide some visual relief as viewed from the street. The property owners have been very careful in proposing details to match the existing development in colors, materials, and finistration. The lighting fixtures are proposed to be dark sky compliant. And the staff is proposing a few edits to the conditions of approval. Some of them are typographical. There is an errata sheet in front of you. On page two of six, Paragraph Roman numeral two, there was a typo from pattern to pattern on the last line of that paragraph. On the following page, on page three, there was a condition of approval that basically was requiring the applicant to provide valuation, but it doesn't apply to single-family homes, so we have struck in Condition Two. That changed the numbering of the remaining conditions. So former Condition Six is now Condition Five. We had some language about, prior to the commencement of construction, a building permit shall be obtained from the Building Department. The proposed project...we were proposing the second sentence be written to say, "The proposed project must comply with all requirements of the city's adopted municipal code and applicable local, state, or federal laws." On page four, Condition...former Condition Eight becomes Seven. The hours of construction that are limited to 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM are in compliance with the regulations for specific noise sources that are outlined in Section 5-11.05, which also prohibits weekend work and holiday work. The plans, as submitted and with the proposed changes to the conditions of approval and the findings that are outlined in this resolution, the project meets the parameters of the VMU Zone, including setbacks, spot coverage, and parking requirements. The project is consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan. And the project is exempt from further environmental review under Section 15303, which is new construction or conversion of small structures, the guidelines for implementation of CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. With that, staff would recommend that the commission open the public hearing and consider approving the project as proposed to allow that 250-square-foot roof deck above the garage based on the findings and conditions.
Super. Any questions for staff? All right, could we hear from the applicant? By the way, just note for format here, typically we'll see property owner and then representative or something. It says architect is Mark Whitman.
But it's a different architect, yeah.
But I don't know who the applicant is unless it's the property owners.
The property owner.
Very good. If one of you would like to come forward and speak to us or if both of you would like to come forward and speak to us, we'd love to hear from you.
I'll give it a shot, and if I fail, I'll send her up. My name is Peter Paken. This is my wife, Sharon. And we purchased the house on Signal Street in June of last year. And we've been living there since. And the main reason we want to make the change...there's probably three main reasons, and I might repeat some of what Ms. Regal has already touched on here. The primary reason is really an aesthetic one. When we're looking at the house from the sidewalk, all we're seeing is garage. And we think that it's just overwhelming for the type of home that's in the neighborhood. Part of it has to do with it being the only two-story house there. But we think that the proposal would alleviate some of that volume that you look at when you stand on the sidewalk. So the aesthetic improvement that we would see... Second is really a use case. The reason why we wanted to live on Signal Street is because it's a very active neighborhood, and there's lots of stuff going on, people walking by. And the way the house is built right now, it's very inward-focused. And we always find ourselves sitting, you know, next to our front door or in the driveway. And those are really not great outdoor spaces. So, you know, this was our idea of how could we create some outdoor space in the front of the house rather than the back of the house?
With a concert right down the hall, right down the street?
Sure, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But, you know, it would be consistent with what the other neighbors have in terms of a front porch. It's just not possible, given the way the house is designed, you know, to add something like that. And then the final concern that we have, and I think this will help, and it's not that obvious, is one of safety. The house is really tall, and I have not tried to get on top of the roof yet to do any kind of maintenance, but it's scary. It's like a 25, 30-foot ladder. The house is really taller than two stories because the upstairs is really...has really tall ceilings, and there is a massive attic above everything else, so...
And the property slopes down toward the street.
Right.
So if you're working the front side, it's even more.
Right, so...and because of the slope, it's really hard to position the ladder. And so having this second platform on top of the garage would really make it a lot safer, you know, for anyone to get on top of the roof to do maintenance, which, you know, invariably will have to do. And then finally, a final minor safety issue that we've discovered only after we've lived there for a while is that we can't see our driveway from anywhere inside the house. And so whenever there is activity out there, you know, someone's pulling in, someone...it sounds like something's going on, we literally have to, like, exit the front of the house to see. And we think it would be very helpful to us if we could, you know, see more of the driveway in the street. Bringing that gable down would be helpful in that regard. So those are really sort of the main reasons why we want to make the change, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And you're also putting sliding glass doors on that front room to get out onto the deck?
Correct. And there are currently four windows.
Yeah.
Basically, the sliding glass door would be dimensionally the same as those windows, but they would operate as doors.
Right.
And obviously would go from the floor up.
Okay.
I have a question.
Great.
Have you spoken to either of your neighbors, particularly on the sides of you, in terms of how do they feel about it?
So we've made a big effort to make the plans available to the neighbors. So I've contacted all the immediate neighbors. Three of them have reviewed the plans and have said, you know, that they're fine. I have not heard from Kathleen Whedon, who is the neighbor on the corner.
Okay.
Down on the corner of the trail or the corner of Santa Ana?
The corner of...right across from the police station, the corner...
Oh, on Santa Ana, corner of Santa Ana, okay.
Exactly, yeah.
Uphill from you.
Uphill, right.
Yeah, so I have not heard from her, but I have described the project to her.
She doesn't live there, or she...
She does live there.
Okay.
But she hasn't set...stated an opinion on it. The three people I've had positive feedback from were Chris and Garnet Grattan, the Grattan who are directly next to us, Mike and Liz, right, and then David and Amy Mendoza. And they were all pretty positive, said they thought it would be an improvement. We've had some conversations with the people across the street, Susan Stifelman and Paul. They've raised a privacy concern with regards to our view into their yard. And, you know, our opinion on it is that basically we have an existing view of their yard, and we're really not changing that view. And I've, you know, brought some pictures if you would like to see them, what the view is today of their property and what the view would be if one were to stand on top of that garage and look at it. I mean, it changes a little bit, but it doesn't change...
Same elevation, just a few feet closer.
Right, exactly. So you're seeing what you're seeing, you're just a little closer. And I have not heard anything contrary from them since we've had that conversation.
Thank you. It's good to hear.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, sir. Did you wish to speak, ma'am? Yeah, step to the microphone so all the people at home can hear you.
Oh, that we did offer to put planters along the front of our deck, and their plants will also grow over time, so we're hoping that it's not an issue for them.
Thank you very much.
I should also mention, I don't want to step on any toes here. I met with Susan. She came to the counter and asked me to go to the site. And since it's extremely close, I obliged and went and viewed the location as well. She invited me to enter her property as well so I could experience that space looking up versus being on the other side looking. You know, there's landscaping. She has quite a bit of landscaping there, and in her discussions, it sounds like...
Which property owner is this?
Across the street.
Across the street, okay.
So this is Susan across the street. Her last name escapes me, Stifelman. She does have quite a bit of landscaping there, which will continue to grow as it matures. In addition to that, it sounds like both neighbors are certainly willing to work with each other to try to find solutions, so...
You tend to worry about privacy issues with people that are downhill from you. And I guess that would be next to the trail. Across the street might be a little bit downhill, but not a whole lot. And you've already got the view out the windows that are there, so...
Yeah, and this is an interesting...this is an interesting property in terms of its relationship to the street. The house is built, the garage is certainly close. Feels close to the street when you look at it.
It is, yeah.
You walk by, and that garage front is just right in your face as you...
It smacks you in the face as you walk down Signal, yeah, or drive down Signal. So it's an interesting situation.
Yeah, I just, you know, I like to tread carefully with these kinds of things because, I mean, just as a setting a precedent, just as a policy matter, I think roof decks can invade people's privacies, and these lots are close together. And the roof deck is pretty high above the two neighboring properties. So it's just...I mean, I'm not saying I'm opposed to this. I'm just saying that... not saying I'm opposed to this, I'm just saying that I, I'm a little hesitant, and because I would, I mean, one difference is the zone is VMU. It's not, it's not...
It's a pretty flexible zone.
Some of the single-family residential. It is more of a mix, although that particular area is pretty much just all single-family houses. But, yeah, I just, I just think it's important to really think about it, and in terms of a policy, and I assume there's nothing in the general plan that talks about whether roof decks are discouraged or not, so...
And Commissioner Lottis, your concern is valid. That was the same concern that we had when we first looked at it.
Okay.
As staff. I think as we continue to look at it and visit the site and experience the space, we got a little bit more comfortable with it. Breaking down the mass of that gabled roof, I think, helps to its relationship to the street, so that was one of the things that started...
That's definitely a positive. I can definitely see that. And so, I don't know if any of the design, well, that's the design aspect of it, so I assume the design background people would agree with that. And so it's really, it's just the privacy thing that I am a little concerned about.
Well, I think, it's, for me, it's, it's okay in this case. I would share your general concern that we not, that we not automatically...
Right.
Approve any roof, any...
Alterations.
Any roof conversion to a deck. But I would ask, if, if we are talking about converting any piece of a roof to a deck, does that automatically become a second-story deck and has to come back to the planning commission? Or, my sense of it here is that if, if this alteration had been made on a single-story house, deck just being a ground-level deck, this, we would not have seen the case, because that's okay. But if you...
But that is an interesting, very interesting...
You just brought up an interesting point.
If you convert any piece of a roof to a deck, does that become a two-story house, and therefore something that the commission sees?
That's a good point.
I, I would say yes. It has this feeling and perception of being a second story. So even if it's a single story and you're flattening that roof...
My thought as well, but I wasn't.
And you want to put a rail around it and have activities above that, like you would see in a beach community, but they tend to be either second or even third stories with the, with the rooftop component.
Yeah. Walk down the Strand in Manhattan Beach, you see a lot of that stuff.
I was just there a couple weeks ago, yeah.
Yeah, it's a great, great place.
I have a quick question.
Yes, ready.
Peter, you mentioned you had a photograph that was from your existing window, looking over at Susan and Paul's.
If you would, sir, please step to the dais and address that, and then if you want to hand out some pictures, we'd love to see them.
Sure. I have three pictures, and they are, one from the existing window where the sliding door would go.
Oh, over the top of the gabled garage.
Right. The second one is from the existing balcony, which is the small balcony to the right.
To the north, right.
Right.
So is that the gate going into Susan and Paul's that I'm looking at?
Right, right. So Susan and Paul's would be the low house that you see with the gable and the round window, right? And then the third picture is a picture from the front edge of the gable roof. So I put a ladder up, climbed up there, and took the same picture, and that's what that would look like.
Simulate standing on the deck. Yeah, okay.
Right.
So if you put them, you know, next to each other, you see that it's really more or less the same view, and that you're not, you know, seeing anything differently.
That's from that, one of those four existing windows, yeah.
Because you already have the one balcony, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so you're essentially seeing in there.
Right, okay. And this is just slightly to the north, looking past the edge of the garage instead of over the top of it.
Here's a comment too, and this may come down the road. So for instance, we've been talking about hedges, fences, and walls, and the property across the street has essentially a green hedge wall over the three-foot height. I'm not saying that I'm opposed to it, but I think it gets back to our, well, this is just my opinion, that we should use the neighborhood planning concept when it comes to those elements, because you get in certain situations like this, where they're kind of at a T-intersection or just offset from it, and now this property is hopefully, or intending to have this balcony or the deck, and in which case you maybe would want something taller there. And that gets back to the scale and the ambiance and what's going on in a neighborhood rather than a blanket every property.
Wouldn't want something taller where?
Well, for instance, right now, this property owner across the street has hedges here that, I know what the plans are, I go by there all the time, they're Australian species that are probably didn't get taller than they are. So our present code says technically we're not supposed to have that, right? And I know it keeps coming back to us, and I guess what I'm trying to say is, in an application like this, I would condone or support neighborhood planning for hedges, fences, and walls, because you have these different applications in different neighborhoods where maybe it is okay to have a taller hedge there because of what's going on, but it's not blocking the line of sight.
Or just the topography you may have houses well above you.
Right, and this, this very topic and how this whole thing was initiated with the neighborhood planning was, we had a project years ago on Signal Street. The top of Signal, at the end of Signal is the trailhead for Shelf Road, and, you know, people drive up there, and in the winter, you've got your lights on possibly when you're coming and going, and there's a drop-off, there's no sidewalk, and the applicant in this, that instance, came in and asked to have a taller hedge, and we all went, sure.
The houses there are either at street level or below.
Right, and a similar application to this. So I guess what I'm, where I'm going with this is that one thing can lead to another, and, you know, it's more complex than just one item because of these different things. But I didn't want to derail what we're talking about.
So this third picture then is you sitting on the gable.
Yeah.
That's right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. I thank you. Those pictures are very informative.
Yeah.
Welcome. One comment on the privacy concern that came up. You know, one thing, if you guys have all been to the site, the garage sits a little bit forward from the rest of the structure.
Mm-hmm.
And all the other homes line up with the structure. So, you know, as you look to the left and to the right, you're really looking not into the windows or the porches, but more forward of the structures.
Yeah, and particularly to the right, the house is well set back, I think, a small yellowish house. Is that right?
Mm-hmm. Just a quick comment.
Yes, ma'am.
So, number one, the lot is non-conforming, and it's a smaller lot in that area, so, you know, minimized outdoor space. So to me, that's a plus for maybe wanting to do something more in the, in the front yard. The other thing is...
Before you go any farther, we never opened and closed the public hearing. There being no public here, I was not too concerned, but we'll...
Thank you, yeah.
We'll stick to form.
And then my other comment too is because it is village mixed-use, and yes, it is, you know, pretty much residential at that point, but somebody potentially could have a business there. And so there's more of that street-to-property relationship, which to me, you know, is a positive for having the upstairs deck. So, I mean, generally, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. And I think all the considerations we've talked about are good questions, and I'm glad that we view them and...
I'm happy to see the staff put it on the record that...
Right.
That the policy, at least at the moment, is if you're going to do a roof deck, that qualifies as a second floor, and we'll have to take a look at it, yeah. Bobby?
I, I agree that, you know, I think actually it'll be a nice addition, and I think it will add some life to the street, and I think it'll make the house look a lot better, and I think it will, I mean, I think more life on the street always makes for a better environment and a safer street, so...
Yep.
Right.
Okay, any more discussion on, on this item, or are we ready to vote on a, on the resolution? By the way, if, if we vote, if we vote on the resolution...
Right.
I would suggest it is the resolution with one, two, three modifications.
Four, including...
Not to count the renumbering of paragraphs.
Yeah, not counting the...
But the deletion of the condition two, if the valuation of the building exceeds 300, and the new condition five with, with changed wording as to complying with requirements of the code, not just any conditions from the building department, and then over on page four of six, the new condition seven, adding a citation to the code for the noise.
Correct. I'll be happy to make a motion.
Great.
You're on a roll.
I'm on a roll.
Mr. Chair, there's also one other correction that was on page two, Roman numeral two, pattern to pattern.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Changed pattern to pattern, right.
And then, one other point of suggestion is on page four on new condition seven, that after section 10...
Oh, five.
Yep, sorry, 51105, that it should say Ojai Municipal Code, just so we know where we're referring.
Ah, yes, okay, right, okay.
All right, I'll go back to this. So I'll make a motion that we approve Design Review Permit DRP 19-008, a roof deck alteration to a single-family residence located at 309 South Signal Street, and that in the approval, we also include the changes that were made to the resolution. Do I need to read them out again, or, I mean, we just discussed them, as just...
In the red line version we reviewed, yeah.
In the red line version, as just discussed, yeah.
Yeah.
I second that.
Terrific. Any other discussion on the motion? Sherry, could we have a roll call, please?
Powers?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Wavering.
Terrific. Have a good time. I think it'll be much nicer looking.
We'll stop by and wave.
We should, we should mention at the end of this item that there is an appeal period, and that appeal period is 15 days.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, that's right.
Just in case, yeah.
I'm doing your approval.
Yeah, great pictures. Thank you very much.
Yeah, that was very helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, now, next on the agenda is discussion items. Might I suggest we go right to the Complete Streets item that's currently back under tab five. This is, this is one for folks out there in the great electronic wilderness that are not familiar with it. There is a regular standing committee of the Planning Commission called the Complete Streets Committee. It meets once a month on the first Wednesday, just before the Planning Commission meeting. Commissioner Law, excuse me, Commissioner Nolan chairs it, and I'm there to help when I can, and we have a number of citizens that attend every meeting, and we welcome any others who would care to attend. We meet right here in City Hall. Tonight, we would like to discuss a piece of the bicycle safety plan. We call it Safe Routes to School.
Jerry?
Oh, yeah, that's right, you've got some...
I have a slide that helps us...
That's all right, yeah, that's good.
Terrific, okay.
We have three other commissioners. I mean, this is a small city, but still it'd be nice to know.
Right, I agree.
Right.
Thank you, yeah, that'd be good.
Well, that's an interesting slide.
Had we, Chair Quilisi had brought up the question about internal elimination from a lighting standpoint versus a vacuum, that example, so that would have came up, but it didn't come up.
Yeah, we've had that conversation in the past.
Okay, good.
And updated the signing ordinance.
I was inexperienced but curious.
Yeah.
Well, it's a learning experience for me, in terms of what we, what we have in code, so. This is a, an aerial of the, of the specific area in which, kind of framing the discussion of, right, turn the mic on.
Yeah.
Can you continue, so that we can?
No, I was just going to say, what, what the Complete Streets Committee would like to do is recommend that the city council, as it considers the various levels of design completion of the ATP project, that they also consider the issues in this, and I would like Commissioner Nolan to cover them.
Okay.
We're talking about safe routes to school and one particular intersection on Ojai Avenue.
Right. So, just a little background, several years ago, we helped, did work and helped write an implementation plan, Complete Streets Implementation Plan for the City of Ojai, and in the general text, we included, you know, that we were interested in, had concerns about safe routes to school. We may have had parks in there, but if we didn't, we should have. We revise that we will. But, so what we've been concentrating on with Complete Streets is safe route to school measures, and in particular, we've been focusing on the Topa, Topatelle Elementary School. Basically, we started there because the City of Ojai was doing a lot of their street overlays, capital improvement projects in that general vicinity, and if there was anything that potentially could be done, if funding was available and things worked out correctly, they could be done at the same time rather than coming back six months later and going, oh, we could have done such and such, and we didn't do it, or let's do it now and rip something up. So, kind of smart planning to have those measures in place, and if possible and doable, they could be, could be included. So basically, then the next thing, so we've been working on that, but then in addition, the ATP grant design has been progressing, and, and part of the Safe Routes to School project, or work that we've been doing, is basically, if you live in a certain neighborhood, how do you get, get from your home to the, to school? And in this case, for the Topa, Topa Elementary, you're on the, the north side of Grand, but potentially, you know, there are students that are coming from the south side of Ojai Avenue, and there really wasn't a safe place for people to walk or bike and make a safe crossing. So we identified that the most logical place to do it would be here, that you could be on the bike trail, come up north on Fulton, and then make a crossing at Ojai Avenue, and it's kind of an interesting intersection because it doesn't align, it's misaligned. But what we're showing on the diagram that you see on Attachment A, page one, is coming up Fulton, and then you're going to see two crossings side by side in that rectangular intersection, and one of them is for pedestrians, and then the adjacent one, it looks like it's striped, because we have these in color, but it's not in color on here. That is actually for bike crossing. So if any of you have been in Ventura recently, you've seen some of the green striping in the, so essentially, that's what that is. And then on the south side and the north side, you're going to see kind of a hatched area. That would, as actually proposed buffering. So the park there, basically the parking would not be there, but there's a buffer for the people in the bike lane to be able to make a turn down onto Fulton, or if you're on the north side, you can make a right onto Drown. And then it's not quite shown, I think you can tell, but if you were going, wait a minute, let me just look at this, I want to make sure I'm explaining the correct item.
So it comes up this way, or down this way?
Yeah, so you go up here, right, and then you make, exactly, so then you would go up Drown, and then basically it stops, it doesn't have the full picture, but it doesn't go the complete length of Drown all the way to Grand as well as on Fulton. It's only a short portion when you're coming to the intersection. So it's up... So it's approximately a block. Um, so we're identifying that. But I did wanna say, uh, I did attend City Council, um, the last City Council meeting, and Greg Grant, our Public Works Director, did a presentation on the thirty-five percent complete, design completion of the ATP grant. And we had got this information, at least this information on this crossing to him, and it was included already. So that was, um, check, check. We can go to the next page. So that was, that was a good thing.
Thank you for your work on that, because it wouldn't have happened.
Yeah, so it wouldn't have happened.
Without the committee's input.
Right, and so part of our, our issue, and I think you're probably gonna get to this, is we sort of have this challenge. We're essentially like in, an advisory board on Complete Streets. And, um, you know, we're, we're doing some work, and ultimately, it needs to go to City Council. But part of the process is, because Complete Streets is under Planning Commission, we need to take it, needs to be reviewed, somehow got, got on the agenda, we make a recommendation, or we don't, with the intention that, you know, something goes to City Council. But sometimes the, there's a time constraint in there, and I, we've had some challenges with that. But anyway, uh, Greg Grant happened to be at our Complete Streets meeting when we went over this, and they took it and did include it. So that was a real positive.
Just a little bit of context.
Yes.
This, this intersection that's shown on page one of attachment A is one of many on along Ojai Avenue that is not controlled by a traffic light.
Exactly.
And that's why we went to a lot of trouble to try to put in, uh, safe lanes, if you will, not just for pedestrians, but all for, also for bicycles.
Right.
There, this design, which we're asking people to consider, has separate buttons for alerting cross-traffic that there's either a pedestrian or a bicycle that wishes to cross Ojai Avenue.
Right. Right.
There's separate, separate buttons at the moment. It'd be nice if we could combine, but, um, apparently Caltrans says bicycles have to have a separate lane from pedestrians.
Vehicle code, not consider pedestrians, although if we get off the bike and we walk, then we become.
Then you can walk in the pedestrian lane if you're walking the bike. But if you're riding the bike, then you're a vehicle.
Yeah.
Like a car, well, sort of like a car.
Um, and there's one thing else I wanted to kind of mention too, especially now that we're, you know, we're just getting started. So, um, there's a time constraint, there's a, you know, funding, budgeting constraints with the ATP. So, um, what we're doing here is, we have these recommendations, um, and this off, this did get, page one, did get into the thirty-five percent, um, design, um, presentation, and.
Greg just plugged it in.
Exactly. So, but everything, some of the other things we have in here may or may not, because of the time constraint and because of the budget constraint. But what, um, what we were doing and, and the Public Works Department is doing is they're making, um, a list of, um, items that we would like to see happen that may not happen with the ATP, but may happen at a later date. So for instance, we talked about like the, the flashing beacon to cross there and a button. Those may not be on the ATP, but they'll be on, it's like the wish list, so to speak. So if funding comes through, then there are certain things that could be added. So I wanted to be really clear about that, everything that's on here, even though we're sending it to, to City Council for consideration, it may or may not immediately get into, to the grant, but may hopefully at some point.
And the only reason.
Safety measures.
Right.
The, the Complete Streets Committee has been working on this, this set of principles, if you will, for a number of years now.
Yes.
The only reason that we feel some urgency in, in asking that this be considered is that this is one place where the Complete Streets thoughts are intersecting the ATP.
Right.
Which is that corridor along one fifty.
Right.
And we have to get it in front of Caltrans and the City Council.
Correct.
Good.
Most of the rest of what the committee does can be done by the city all on its own.
Right. I've seen Lucas has a, a comment or something.
Yeah, but I, wait my turn. I, uh, I had a thought when I was looking at this, um, and my thought is, is while we do have ATP and the plans moving forward to thirty-five to sixty to ninety percent, I think that, some, somewhere around, around, along there. Um, I have had conversations with, with Greg Grant. He has identified that it is an extremely tight timeline that they're working on.
Mentioned that, yeah.
Uh, he's calling it almost a near impossible deadline, um, but they are, they are committed to, to meeting that deadline. So I think that's encouraging. The other thought that I, that I had was, we have the general plan, um, coming up as an update. And whether these get in, included as goals or policies, or, um, or even within the implementation component as well.
Mm-hmm.
I think those are all really good, um, things to think about with something like this.
Yeah.
Whether, whether, um, like Commissioner Nolan, you were saying, some of these pieces don't necessarily get, as, as a wish list within the ATP, it's not to say that they're gonna fall off onto deaf ears. They just simply, we start looking at it and, in terms of how it, it works in the general plan.
Right, and I just wanted to mention that when we, um, initially did the implementation plan, we just said, it's a living document, and that we, there were things that we could add to it. And if we, and that's our intention with these safe routes. If, you know, we go through the process, it goes to, um, Planning Commission, assuming it got approved, went to City Council and they approved it, it would just be, um, a supplement to the master plan. And then you have it in that document, and then if the timing is right and funding is available, basically you have the plan there. I mean, you might, you'd have to go to a construction document level, but you've got, the concept is there. And that really helps with getting funding.
Right, some of that pen is.
So it's pre-planning.
Pen to paper, right?
Yeah.
Right.
And you're, you've started that process. It's not like you're starting from scratch.
Exactly.
You've got something to build on to.
You have, you have something concrete to say in a grant proposal.
Right.
That you'd like to implement.
Or even if, you know, you're trying to market it to the general public or what have you. But basically, we're, we're building off of our original master plan. So this is something new.
Is it a master plan, what, master plan?
This is Complete Streets Master Plan, yeah.
Okay.
Initially, I may have said that and made a, made a goof earlier. We initially were going to call it an implementation plan, and it went back and forth. I think the city attorney even talked about it, but ultimately, they called it a master plan.
And that should be in the general plan.
And that's part of the circulation element.
It is part of the circulation. It's already there. City Council approved this a couple of years ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So basically, what we're talking about with these safe routes, um, is like a supplement or an addendum to that.
We just need to be updated to include.
Right, but tonight, um, what we're doing is, we're just, we're talking about the intersections where a safe route actually crosses the ATP, meaning Ojai Avenue or Maricopa Highway, because that's already in process, so. Now, I'm just wondering if, um, everyone had a chance to, I mean, there's a lot of information here, and it could be a little overwhelming.
Well, the pictorial examples, though, I think.
Are good.
Pretty much speak for themselves, yeah.
Really good.
Right, um, and I, I also wanna put a, a big shout and a thank you to, um, we've had kind of a, a subcommittee of the Complete Streets that has done a lot of work on this, and it did the graphics and everything. So I, I really want to acknowledge them for doing that. So, all right, so let's see, do you think we need to go page by page, or I, what I could do is, um.
I think the, the first page gives you the overall view, and then beyond that, there are either drawings or sample photographs of the kinds of things that are being suggested.
Exactly.
On that first page.
And the narrative actually kind of walks you through the intersection, so to speak, um, what's going on. And as a matter of fact, even the, the bike crossing signal that Steve spoke about is like on page seven. There's an, an example of what that could be, and there's actually some more ele, what I would call like an elevation drawing, which make it a little bit easier to see what the striping looks like. So yeah, like on page six, that's Fulton as it intersects Ojai Avenue. And then, um, I think what I could do too is if we go to attachment A, page nine, unless there's some questions in between, there's a list at the bottom of, or halfway, oh, wow, I'm almost halfway, a little bit more than halfway down, um, attachment A, page nine, that has safety enhancements needed, and it's kind of a recap of the, the verbiage that's above it. I don't know if anyone, if you had a chance to do, but that's generally some of the items that we're talking about and why we're doing it. I mean, I could read them out loud, but I don't know if that's necessary. We just wanna make sure everybody understands, and I, I know it's a lot of information.
Right.
Are we doing anything on this tonight?
So what our intention was, and Lucas, please tell us if we're off the mark at all, was to have the Planning Commission review this and then ideally make a, um, a recommendation for the City Council to consider looking at these items as part of the ATP or for, like we talked about, those additional wish list, um, categories that, um, Greg Grant has been sharing with the City Council and staff and what have you.
What is, um?
Attachment B is the real eye test.
Oh, that's, oh, this, okay.
It's forty pages of drawings of what is covered by the ATP grant.
Right.
You can see it on attachment B, page one. It shows the portion of Highway thirty-three on the west end of town.
Right.
Back to the Y, and the portion of one fifty that runs all the way through town. And then the remaining thirty-nine pages of that are detailed sections of that, what is probably two and a half miles?
Right.
Something like that, of streets.
So basically, like I said, we concentrated on, um, the Fulton-Drown intersections, which we know already has, um, Greg Grant has included on the ATP, so check, check on that one. Then our other locations we had are on, um, let's see, we had Ventura, we had Country Club Road, correct?
Yes.
You know, what's a little unfortunate, and maybe I'm saying this for myself, um, is that these were in color, and some of the text is a little light, so it's a little bit hard to read. So I might need myself just a minute to, um, to reorient.
So.
Because these are, basically, these are just road sections that the, um, consultants are doing for the ATP. And then the Complete Streets went in and made comments per section on safety, basically, sa, safety measures, whether it's for pedestrians or, um, bikes, and often case, of course, for cars, because we're all sharing the road.
So are the, with the, there's a lot of questions, and that, those are your, the committee's comments, right?
Yeah.
So have they been answered, or, I mean?
Yeah.
You're just raising it as some, they would need to be answered before.
They would need to be answered, so once again, they're, they're considerations at this point, like, oh, you could do such and such, or should you, you know, kind of with a question mark.
Okay.
So basically, City Council would have to go in and, and review it, and probably have a little bit of a presentation as to what was going on here. Um, but once again, for them just to consider it on the ATP and/or for these future wish list items.
The intersection that we're talking about specifically, I think, is on page thirty-two.
Right, but I'm not sure that we need to go over this one that much, because Greg's already.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we do, but if you wanna keep this forty-page packet.
Oh, that's true.
For future reference, the intersection that we're talking about right now is on page thirty-two.
Well, that's, yeah, maybe we should, um, what I'm trying to do, and I'm sorry, this is taking me a minute, um, is to identify, um, because some of the text is a little bit light. I just wanna make sure that I'm, we know where we're at as we go through.
Is attachment B available online in color?
No, this is, basically, this is what I sent to, to you, Lucas. It wasn't in color?
No.
Oh, I didn't even know that, you know, that, basically, they were supposed to get that document to me earlier in the day, and I had work, and I said, get it to me so I can review it. Well, by the afternoon, late afternoon, they hadn't sent it, so I didn't have a chance to go through.
The, the, the bicycle, attachment A was in color, though, but this, this one wasn't black and white.
Okay.
I will admit, as it copied.
Yeah.
Some of that text is getting lost, and I think the original.
Exactly, yeah.
Was, had that text, but as you, as you photocopy your image.
If it would be possible to scan this stuff and put it on the website, I think that would, that would be very helpful.
Oh, it is?
Well.
That's right, okay.
I would even say not scanning, but using the existing PDF that you had provided.
Right.
Um, because when you print and then rescan.
That is in color.
The original one that we're using, okay.
Okay.
The, you're talking about attachment B?
The existing, you, the existing PDF, your words.
Yeah.
Is that in color?
It's in black and white, but the attachment A was in color.
Right, that's.
It just ended up photocopying in black and white.
So attachment A is basically the Topa-Topa Safe Route Study, but.
It's the one intersection that's just a piece.
It wasn't, it wasn't black and white?
All these sections actually had, where like, where the bike crossings were like in a green pen, so they were, it was easier to.
It'd be nice to have it on color.
To grasp.
So there's, it's, but there's a color copy that we could get?
Well, that's what I'm wondering, if I could try to get that, the color one, and if I'd have to rescan it. I think, yeah, um, I'll, I'll, I'm gonna be, yeah, I will admit that, you know, when I got my packet, I looked at the agenda and I went, oh, I guess we didn't make it on the agenda, because I didn't see it on the agenda. And I had gone through the few items, but I was really swamped this week, so I didn't look to my last couple items till late this afternoon. And then all of a sudden, I discovered this.
Yeah, so the.
So it was like, I didn't know that it was there, yeah.
And I should, uh, for, for disclosure, in terms of how, um, we were putting the agenda together.
Okay.
There are opportunities for, for the subcommittees when there are reports.
Okay.
That this is really where.
That falls.
It's going to, yeah, it's going to be living.
Okay, thank you for that.
And for the benefit of, of all the commissioners, the ask here really is,
Yeah.
would the commission be amenable to suggesting that City Council and the negotiating team with Caltrans take this into consideration?
Right.
Yes.
Not, not implement it, we're, we can't do that.
Just consider, like, look at it. I mean, there may be some things on there, they go, no way we can do that, but, oh, yeah, that's great. Just like they did adopt the, the one, the Fulton-Drown crossing, which is great. So we know that was, that one got in. And like I said, and some things may occur, um, you know, in a year or two, if they're gonna be doing some work and we get funding.
And there are already things in the ATP that, that specify a number of pedestrian crossings of Ojai Avenue. This one happened to also include bicycle, because there's a substantial residential neighborhood immediately south of.
Right.
Of, uh, Ojai Avenue, bounded by Fulton on the east and Bald on the west.
Right, and anyone can use these, I mean, we're targeting, you know, safer routes to school, but everybody can use it.
Safer for everybody.
Yeah, you don't have to just show that you're a student at Topa-Topa.
I appreciate all the Complete Street reports, and, and the service your committee's doing is invaluable.
Thank you.
And, um, I know it's been a, a long road aho. And, um, so it's always exciting when I'm hearing these incremental.
Right, thank you.
Steps being implemented, or at least taken into consideration.
At least proposed to be considered, yes.
So I'm gonna make a, a suggestion, because we, it, it's hard to read some of the, the pages. We could go ahead and make a consideration the way it is. Or do we come back with the colored ones and continue the review? I'm, I'm, that's just a thought.
Do we need to see?
More.
More than this right now?
Right.
To recommend consideration?
I just have a question. So, um, what do you think the response of council will be when they, I mean, um.
In the format that it's in?
Questions, yeah, in the format that it's in, I, I'm just.
Attachment B, as we look at it during the Complete Streets meeting.
Yeah.
Is large format.
Eleven by seventeen, I think we have them, I don't.
Oh, okay.
Or bigger than that, I think, yeah. Um, so.
Will they know what your.
Part of the ask would be to take this to council, recommend consideration, and provide them with larger scale drawings.
The other thing that could happen possibly would be, um, if we decided as a commission to say, yes, we'd like to see it move forward. It could be, um, consolidated and made easier to understand and read. In other words, pull out the sheets, label them a little bit better, make sure the graphics are cleaned up. and take it to City Council. I, I kind of doubt City Council will wanna completely go through everything, maybe they will, but it would be enough for them, enough information for them to say, uh, well, we, we would like you to consider this and give it to Public Works Department and to the consultant, and just say, you know, review this, and...
So basically, basi...
There is a time constraint.
Right.
There definitely is.
There's definitely a time constraint.
And so what we're basically asking them to consider is the addition of this, the bicycle crossings.
It's the safety crossings.
The safety crossings for the bicycles, so... Yeah, I mean, that's very clear, that's clear and that's ready, I mean, I, that's definitely ready to go to council, that's really been worked out.
That already went in.
Right, but I mean, these, but the, but these additional ones.
The additional ones, um...
So I, I mean, I don't think that we need to analyze every single section, because I don't think we're prepared to do that anyway, I mean, I think that, yes, if you want to add that, I'm all for that.
So there's, for instance, like at Country Club Road, that's where Mitchell High Junior High is.
Right.
There's a signal light there.
Where's the Country Club Road section?
That would be ahead, that would be in one of the low-numbered pages, because this thing starts up at El Roblar and Kuyama, and works its way east, basically.
Now, that's, see, that's the other issue of why, um, is having to thumb through and find.
It just, I, you know...
Yeah, it's a little vague.
I know you guys have done so much work, and I don't want, I don't want to be, um, too critical, but I'm just...
I think it's a good point.
If I ran council and I'm looking at this, I would be just saying...
No, 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 I agree with you that it's a little hard to read.
Yeah, I think Country Club may be on page nine, it is, it is hard to read.
I, I agree with you, and, um...
But this isn't the format in which it will be presented to the City Council.
Well, I, like I said, it probably could get cleaned up, so that it'd be easier and, and labeled, and larger.
And larger, okay.
Yeah, and, um, that would make sense to me, I mean, I'm, here I am presenting it, Steve and I, and we're kind of going, well, wait, what is that, because we can't read it that well.
Well, but it is important to move it ahead, because if some of this, some additional, uh, components of this might be able to be added.
Yes.
Correct.
Right, and, and we have, we have to, to meet the deadlines that we have in the design timeline. We need to get this to council so that they can get it suggested, again, to Caltrans and the negotiating team before some, some early time in March, I believe.
And it would just be those intersections, and like we said, the ones already been done. And I do completely understand the, the time constraint and the pressure that they're under, too, so, um, whatever we could do to make it easier and simpler to understand.
So, I guess my, couple of questions that I have, in, in terms of, of, um, of Attachment B. You're referencing and providing questions versus statements or, or direction? In, in some of these intersections, and I'm, I guess my, my question to the question is, is, what are you looking for with those, with those questions? Is there, is there a solution that's in mind? Is there an end game that you're looking for with that, I guess?
Most of the comments that are handwritten on these sheets are suggested solutions to perceived shortcomings of the current design. Would that be fair?
Yeah, like...
And there are some questions, like, for instance, I'm looking at the intersection of, on Correo, this would be Maricopa High. It says, what is the distance? So there's, there are some questions also, but what you see graphically drawn on is a graphic solution. So I'm on page, so I'm on attachment, for instance, I, I just happen to be on Attachment B, page ten of...
So it's really not so many questions.
Ten of forty, and you'll see some questions, but you'll see that there's some graphics that have been drawn in, and those are...
Showing striped, striped streets, basically.
Yeah. So I'm, to me, you know, it might be the kind of thing, if this got cleaned up, would be label, like where it's at. The graphic, um, solutions are, and then verbally, it could be written out, too, to further explain it.
Okay.
I'm thinking that would be helpful.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to, when I was looking at this on Friday, and then again.
Yeah.
On Monday, uh, when I was seeing the questions, my, my immediate response was, well, what's, is this, is the, is the visual the solution to the question?
Right.
What, for instance, going back to page ten of forty for Attachment B.
Right.
It, it states, should we or are we adding designated bike crossing paint in these areas?
Right, and then you see that they actually have them on the graphic.
Correct.
Right, so in a way, the comments are, make it a little confusing.
Yeah, yes.
And I agree.
That's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm struggling with.
Right, and I think would hap, well, I'm not trying to make an excuse at all, but we got to a certain point, and then we knew we had to turn it in to be, to be able to get on the agenda, and there was this whole thing with the time constraint.
I did give you a deadline, you're right.
You gave me a deadline, right, and unfortunately, I literally got it right before I sent you, so I, my intention was to, like, review the whole document, and it was like almost five o'clock, so I couldn't do something.
Which, which you have done, and all of us have done.
Yes.
At least in part, on the larger scale drawings already.
So our entire committee actually did review these on larger scale drawings.
Okay.
Then they sent us the PDF of that, which is what I sent you, but the drawings we looked at were in color also. So I'm thinking the comments, which are good, because that was the start of the process, you know, you start asking questions, well, what about this, what about that? And then you start coming up with the solutions, but the solutions are graphically depicted. Well, this, you know, thanks to, thank you all for just being part of this.
And again, they're all suggestions that we would like people to consider.
It's a process, yeah.
Right.
But thank, yeah, I mean, I know, you know, it's, it helps.
So, um, is it, is it the sense of the commission that we should push this forward and ask City Council to have a look at it and?
I think so, yes.
Consider it as, as they work through the design?
Yes. Yes. And using the color.
Using larger scale.
Larger color.
Colored.
They clearly showed that, I mean, they, it emphasizes more that here's the solution, so that, that would be great.
Exactly, yeah, especially because these are sections of this long drawing, and, you know, you look at it, and it, it's a little hard to read some of them.
Even in the larger scale, it's a little confusing, because you've taken, you've taken this, this two and a half or three mile, whatever it is.
Chopped it in.
Section of road, and just chopped it up in pieces, and...
And if the names don't come through on the street, you know, it takes a minute to like, oh, where am I?
Yeah.
So, um, I have another question.
I know, we want your answers.
Because I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand the, the history of...
Okay, this is good.
So the Complete Streets Committee, the Subcommittee, they've looked at this, you've, you've had an opportunity to kind of pore over it.
Yes.
Was the direction?
You stood around that table back there with two or three copies of the large-scale drawings.
Large-scale drawings.
Flipped through them and said, what's here, what's here?
Diving into the details.
Yeah, we were in general, uh...
Sharpening your pencil to, to kind of understand what...
Actually, we had a unanimous vote that, that we would like, wanted to move it forward.
Okay. Was that something that was provided at some point by, by council, asking for a direction from? I think that's my question.
That's the question, yeah, um, well, I guess I'm gonna have to say not directly, so...
So you, so the, the street, the Complete Streets Subcommittee had taken this on as an added kind of, I guess?
We're a standard...
I'd say it's within the charter of the Complete Streets Committee to continue to analyze whatever it is, safe routes to school, to parks, unsafe things that we find as, as a committee, we have, in many of our meetings, we have gone out to a specific part of the city and just walked the blocks, and said, are there pedestrian impediments here? A, a good example would be the west side of Park Road between Grand and, uh, Ojai Avenue. There are a lot of posts, uh, signs, telephone poles, and, and mailboxes that are right in the middle of the sidewalk, that are a severe, uh, barrier for, for folks who have very limited vision.
Or it's just not easy accessible at all.
Or, or trees hang over.
Or for even, you can't even walk side by side.
Right.
Right.
But basically, we, we did that, was kind of an infill sidewalk, um, study, but that, we, um, actually worked with the Public Works Department, and they, we did that in conjunction with them doing, like, the capital improvement plan. So they had, have their plan and what streets are gonna pave, you know, each year. And so we actually then went out and they asked, well, if you see something that potentially we could do during our infill, or, um, capital improvement project, let us know, so we did that, uh, did all those reviews, and then sent them to, um, the consultant and the Public Works Director.
Okay.
So I hear what you're, what you're saying, so, um, we're all on mark.
Well, is Greg, is Greg Grant aware of all this?
Yes, he actually, yeah, in addition to, um...
He's pretty, he's pretty... It's not a surprise to Greg.
No.
But it's a little...
No, but the, I think the concern and the, and discussions I had with him, um, last week is, is the timeline that we're looking at here.
I know, I talked with him today, too.
Oh, yeah, okay, good.
Yeah, because I'm completely aware of it, and I can, and I get it, and I don't, like I said, we don't want to overburden and just all of a sudden start pushing things on, but, um, it was through Complete Streets, um, and it, and a lot of it has to do with our process of, if we do something in Complete Streets, then it has to come back to Planning Commission, and then...
Well, let's...
Which, which I totally get, I'm not discounting that at all.
Well, there's a process for getting, putting things on the agenda anyway, so...
Exactly, yeah.
There is.
Our ask is just that the city manager and staff and...
Yeah, it's this, I, I believe it'd be the city manager and the mayor.
Mm-hmm. Consider, um...
Because they may say no.
Consider, you know, the, that we would push, like to put it forward to council.
So let's, let's just talk through a couple of different scenarios. Let's say that, that you as a commission want and are looking for the, the City Council to consider this. And then, in that scenario, when it's discussed, and I'm not, I'm not saying that this is going to happen, but it could work either way, it would be a yes or a no. I still think that the items that you're working on here are items that are certainly of, of importance for the, for the general plan in terms of its update. Whether it's a, a broad stroke look at, um, bicycle safety, whether it's, it's goals and policies that get embedded, um, that we, that we turn to in the event of any sort of public right-of-way improvements, or even private, um, components that are being folded into whatever projects we're looking at into the future. I think those are all important pieces to be, to be thinking about, so I think the, the work is still valid, and, and certainly, um, in whatever format, it ends up, uh, landing on whomever's lap. So, anyway, I just wanted to, to identify those, those potential pieces as well.
So, um, I'm trying to think where, where to go with this, um, because we do have the several other intersections that, it would be ideal if they would, City Council would consider it, and then it would go to, to, um, Public Works and the consultants. And I totally am on board with the time constraint and, and everything else. And if, if they said, we don't have time for it, but looks interesting, potentially, that could go into this wishlist.
Goes on to the wishlist, right, yeah.
And that, and I, I said that at the beginning, and I wanted to, to make sure I was really clear in that, and that we completely understand that.
Right.
So, um, and we, and...
So there's a wishlist for the ATP?
Well...
I did hear Greg say something about that, at the meeting.
Right, he did, right, so basically, there's some things like, um, all right, for instance, he showed the intersection of Drown and Fulton with the striping that we proposed, great, that's checked off. But as far as like putting in a, a rapid flashing beacon, and maybe the bike, um, you know, buttoned across, that wouldn't be in the ATP, but that would be on this one, two, three list of, oh, if we get funding, that's a top priority area. There it is, it's on the list. And so that was, you know, what I mentioned at the beginning of presenting this, is that I, we understand that, that not everything would necessarily get in there, but just to be considered, and if not, potentially could go on those lists.
Sure.
So that's, that's the ask.
Right.
Or the request.
So what's the rate of success?
We've done our part on this, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, we've done our part on this tonight?
Wait, say that again?
If, if we, if, if we have looked at this in sufficient detail to say, yes, this is something we would like to ask the City Council to consider.
Yes.
For the ask list.
For...
For the wishlist.
ATP or wishlist.
For, for the ATP, and if it doesn't make the ATP, at least be on the wishlist for subsequent changes.
I mean, we could at least ask that it go on the agenda.
Exactly.
Right.
If they say no.
Then we've done our part.
I, I, yeah.
They'd be mad.
Well, yeah, and I'm, I'm looking to you, we want to make sure.
I'm not responding to that.
We're following the right protocol, because, you know...
I think in, in terms of a protocol, I, I think that we're, we are within, it is, it is an item that's been placed on the agenda, and it's, it's a standing, it's, it's a standing item, providing information that can certainly be voted on by this commission.
And then if, if we are in agreement that, um, I'm not saying we are, but if we decide that we are, that we wanted to, um, have this in color and detailed out more, I could go back to our committee and have that done, and then submit it, I guess, to you.
And what's the timeline for that?
And that would, that would be if there was a timeline, I mean, it seems like we'd want to do it sooner than later, but I could, um, contact everyone.
I would say it's important for you to provide that to the City Council.
Right.
But the, the, the agenda item is already publicized, right?
We'll say, yes, we want to consider it, you provide that to the City Council, because otherwise, we're talking about next month, and then...
Wait, you're talking about for this, for this next, this next City Council.
Next City Council meeting is six days away.
Correct, so that agenda has, that ship has already sailed.
Is, yeah, we're past that.
Correct.
So it would have to go potentially to the next one.
The first meeting in March.
I'd say let's just move this along, and I'm in favor of suggesting that it be considered, that the City Council consider it, and that you provide with them better graphics than we got.
Yeah. Um, and then, Lucas, what would be, um, what would be the date that you would need to have the material?
It depends on which date, the, the...
They agenda, so, yeah, we don't get to dictate it, exactly, but...
If it's March tenth, we have to submit it Monday, and see if they're...
Oh, that would be this Monday, you're right.
Oh, this coming Monday.
And that would be within, that would be with an agenda report.
Oh, it's two weeks, isn't it?
No, it...
It would be due to our city clerk for the March...
Right, so we, we send items well in advance.
Right, I know.
Okay.
So that would be, what is that, February the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth, yeah.
Um, and then the alternate would be, um...
It went to March twenty-fourth, and it's due to the city clerk, March ninth.
March ninth, okay.
And that means he has to just effort one day.
Yeah, and of course, they would have to say we want it on the agenda or not.
Right, so that...
In addition, I understand that, too.
Right, so we, yeah, we have weekly meetings to discuss those items that are potentially being placed on the agenda, and then those items get discussed with the mayor.
All right, so why don't I, um, get some more information, email you back? I mean, even if we got the information on Monday, and they said they didn't want it for a couple more meetings, then, okay, but at least you'd have it.
And it's done, you don't have to think about it anymore.
Do you think that you can, you can turn this around and get it by, by Monday?
I'm, I'm hoping that I can.
Okay.
But I will, um...
I mean, we, we have seen, we have seen color.
Yes.
Versions of these charts, larger color versions of these charts.
Okay.
And so they are around somewhere.
But I think it would be great if we could get this, have it in color, um, have, have them labeled, so you knew, like, where you were. And, I mean, just a little more obvious, and, and then maybe, um, I don't know, they need to white out the comments, or have a little legend at each, at each...
We don't have to decide that, that's between each, so can we move this along?
No, 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 that's between the Complete Streets, yeah, sorry.
So do we need to vote on this to send it forward? That's typical for recommendations to the City Council.
It's completely within your power if you want to vote.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be, yeah, or, yeah, are there any objections to sending this forward?
No.
Then if not, so ordered.
Okay.
Good.
Great.
Thanks.
All right, let's flip back in the book then, and we'll go to tab number four, Planning Commission tentative agenda for the next meeting, March fourth, and the, uh, one after that, March eighteenth. Three eighteen Bryant Street is, this is the, the back corner of the Condor Self-Storage.
Correct.
Area, okay.
We ever gonna see that?
You will see it eventually. There is, there is a high likelihood that it will be continued again, and, but I would just preface it with this, that I am, that we as staff are moving forward with something, and it is, it is in the works, I just can't disclose any more information than that, but we're moving forward.
Something, okay.
Yes.
Now, I see... Now, I see the development agreement with Becker Group is a discussion item, not a public hearing item.
Yes, so here's, here's this, here's the, kind of the working situation with the, the Becker Group Development Agreement. We're working with a draft currently, and it's currently being massaged, uh, there's been a lot of work-
Draft Development Plan.
Development Agreement, which could very well include lots of different things-
Oh.
That I can't go into detail on yet.
Oh, what, what is the property, or you can't say? Or is it several properties?
Okay, whatever.
Well, he can't say, so we might as well-
Okay, the mysterious project, okay.
Okay, fine.
But just know that it's, it's on as a discussion-
Okay.
And it may very well come off and go to a different meeting, but just know that it is out there.
Okay.
Something's brewing.
In, in terms of protocol, when there is a, it, it, it seems a little backward to me, if there's a development agreement that has been negotiated, then it has been signed by the applicant and signed by the city? No.
Which is the reason why it may end up going to another- Essentially, potentially to different, not to this group first, I think, the process is, the reason why I'm saying that, that item may be moved is because there, there's protocol, like you were just saying, in terms of where it goes first.
Yeah, I thought the protocol was that a development agreement had to be approved by the Planning Commission, and then recommended to the city council-
Correct.
For the final decision.
That is, that protocol is correct.
Okay. Okay, so, on March fourth, we'll perhaps be discussing the general outline of the development agreement? Maybe, maybe not.
Right.
But it's not a public hearing item for us to make a decision.
Correct.
Okay. And the general plan update will cover another piece.
Yeah, that one, that one's, uh, developing as we speak, we're actually working with Ramey Group on, um, having a kickoff meeting, and, and, in doing that, we're also building a, what's referred to as a stakeholders', um, list, a running list. So we're working through that right now, actually, so, there are some updates that will be coming forward, um, in March.
Just a comment, uh, at our last Planning Commission meeting, when we were discussing the general plan, we were talking about, um, kind of the stakeholder meetings or workshops that may happen, and Commissioner Powers and I mentioned, uh, Earth Day, which will be April-
April, right?
Yeah, uh, eighteenth, on a Saturday, um, that is still a possibility, if they wanted to, to actually have, um, you know, a booth work area, to do something like that, and if they were interested, because that, right now, that's being planned out of who is going to be there and doing what, um-
Who's, who's, who's heading the-
It's Ojai Valley Green Coalition.
Do you, do you have information on that? Who, who on here would have information on that, that I could pass forward to the Ramey Group?
On, what, the Earth Day?
Yeah.
You could either g- give it to one of us, but we could actually give you, I could email you the name of the person who's actually putting on-
Contact person, that would be helpful.
Tara, Taylor.
There is someone that's producing the event for us.
Okay.
That staff, that's Green Coalition staff.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that would be, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
I know we were talking about it at the last meeting in terms of the, the kind of the bigger items, in terms of getting people involved.
Right, and it'll be a little different demographic as well.
Right.
But like, the last time we had general plan update on the agenda, it was, for the purpose of talking that time about the housing element, and just generally what's happening, and that's the one-
Sure.
Has to be most frequently updated, and that kind of-
And the housing element even has additional things going on with Rena.
Sure.
We're, we're listening, I'm listening on a webinar here next week regarding it, so, it, that, that one is moving forward in strategic steps, that are out of our control at the moment, so.
Right, well, there, as we discussed at the last time we had this on the agenda, there are several elements of the general plan that I think we should be involved in, not just housing, but circulation, and perhaps air quality, certainly land use, and so, I'll leave it to you to figure out what, what to discuss with us as this topic comes up.
The commission's involvement is in every-
Idea.
Yeah, the commission's involvement is in every aspect of the general plan. We may have a deeper dive into certain elements, and there may be elements that we look for guidance on, e, through other commissions, but know that, and I, I, maybe I didn't emphasize this enough, every single element that is touched will come before this commission as a recommendation to city council, so, that, I just want to make sure it's clear.
Uh, the other thing that still leaves me a, a bit befuddled is what to do with environmental justice. If the city comes to some sort of a decision, along with the consultants of the city council, as to what, first of all, what it means, and two, how would it be implemented in a general plan update? I'd certainly be interested in hearing that.
And that will be coming forward.
Okay.
We'll have that discussion.
Okay.
He has all these surprises for us, and we have to wait.
Well, there's things that I can't discuss, they're not, they're not agendized, so, yeah, biting my tongue. But they're exciting, so it's-
Yeah, it's good, yeah, we have something to look forward to, right?
I just never, I heard the analogy of elephants mating, there's a lot of dust, there's a lot of noise, and then nothing happens for two years.
That's true.
And then there's a result. I'm hoping it doesn't take quite that long.
It's about that dust, right?
I know, right? I haven't been here long enough, I don't think.
Okay, any questions for staff about, about the tentative agenda, or future commission hearing items? I see Boku, one oh seven North Ventura is the Old World University. I believe that's a Becker project. Uh, one oh six Pauline, this is a, a house, I guess, in the general vicinity of the Emerald Iguana.
Yes, it's next door.
And, uh, Andrew and Daly Road, oh, lot line adjustments, okay. Eight thirty-two East Ohio, that's-
Is that that little one-story building?
Giorgio's, used to be Giorgio's, or something like that?
Oh, it's on the south side?
Yeah, it's on the south side.
Oh, okay.
Wait, is it, it's on the south side or the north side, correct me if I'm wrong here? North side.
North side, even number, yeah.
Spanish building, the one-story that was recently sold?
Yes, the-
Another restaurant.
Right. The use- It's a, it's a sushi restaurant, if I recall correctly.
Oh, oh, okay.
That's being proposed, so.
Is Lift to Eat gonna open? Are they?
Yeah, I thought they were already-
I couldn't tell.
It's like it's closed all the time.
Yeah, ouch.
I have a retrospective question, since you mentioned Boku, a few, couple meetings ago, we talked about the Tesla charging stations, and some, um, um, things that were non-implemented, that we thought there were going to be like taller hedges, or there was, you were concerned about the size of the signs, and screening.
Yeah, it didn't look exactly like what they submitted.
And we gave some input, and I'm just wondering if that got passed along, or is it a done deal?
Yeah, the, the, you're talking about the conditions of approval and the site plan, we have, we have since signed off on that. So I, I think with the, at the end of, of that discussion, I think it was kind of, what can we learn from, from this, moving forward?
Yeah, I couldn't remember, that's why I'm bringing it up. Okay, so it's, so what we could learn from this conversation?
And I, even when I went out to the site, and I don't want to belabor the, the discussion, but even when I went out to the site, the, the landscaping did seem a little bit short.
Spars.
Um, sparse, but in, in our discussions, I kept turning back to and thinking of when you have landscaping that's small, and you end up allowing that to grow and mature, it has a much better chance of, of survival, I think that was even something that I was turning to you on, yeah.
Yes, right.
Commissioner Nolan.
However.
However, yes, however, so it's-
Somebody sat off on it, and I'm-
Yeah.
Back and forth on that one.
It's something to think about, and certainly we'll chew the fat on that, as we look at projects in the future.
And if they have future changes to that site-
They have to come back.
Maybe that could be, some of those issues could-
Those could certainly be discussed-
Yeah.
With future, um, revisions to that site.
Okay.
Two oh four, two oh six Kenyatta.
Are you moving a report, or you're not up to it?
What report? Oh, the council report?
Yeah.
I wasn't at the council report, I, I had, oh, you were, you were absent, I said I wasn't able to make it, because I went to Ventura,
Oh, right.
Ventura County Watership Council-
Okay.
Um, and filmed that-
That's right, I was absent.
About the Metoah Dam ecosystem restoration.
All right, then.
Kathy went, but I don't know if you want to hear a full report or not, I mean, it's online.
Yeah, it's online.
Watch it on YouTube, a lot happened.
The ATP was presented.
We're, we're now on tab five, I guess, then.
Yeah, it was a rich council, I mean, I looked at the agenda, it was a rich meeting, there was a lot there.
Pickleball was brought up.
They, they postponed discussing, discuss, discussing absences, commission absences.
Oh, that's right, yeah, thank you much, too.
And that keeps bouncing around.
Well, I made a huge effort to be here tonight, so I wouldn't have an absence.
Yeah, okay, well, that's the only, that's the only one that's, uh, that's on the reporting schedule tonight. Are there other, other comments or topics from commissioners that you'd like to make available to the rest of the commission and to the audience on television?
I was just listening to the Historic Preservation Commission meeting, was that last night?
Last Thursday.
Oh, last Thursday.
Thursday, yeah.
Yeah, they were, they were discussing the absences, and, um, they were, they did comment that Planning Commission is the only commission that meets twice a month, but we are limited to the same amount of absences.
Yeah, have a higher standard over here.
Yeah.
Well, that's, yeah.
And I, I think even council has brought that up, um-
Yeah.
In recent meetings, and I remember being involved, or listening in on.
Well, it either makes us esteemed or penalized.
Yeah, I did, I did look at it, exactly.
They have higher expectations for us. I, um, I, I wanted to mention, before we close, I thank you, Sherry, for putting the zoning and land use maps back in.
Oh, yeah.
I'm still looking for the, the time that, um, that we have some updated maps, but also, thank you very much for putting in these conflict of interest radius maps, so that as things come up, we know for sure about recusals. If there were other, no, no other comments, then, uh, we, we are adjourned, thank you very much, it's at eight oh three.